Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. A rare occasion, both clocks are saying 7.30. So we will start the meeting. As usual, the proceedings will be filmed, but the camera is facing us. So when you ask your question and supplementary, you will not be on the camera, although it will be. So on that basis, let's move on. Any apologies?
No apologies.
No apologies. The minutes of previous meeting, pages 7 to 18. Are there any questions, comments, or can I sign up?
Yes. Thank you, sir. Just on page 9, the sixth line part, where it goes into 'we need', it just should be one sentence divisive, and then comma, 'we need', just makes more sense for six toes. So I was certain in the meeting. Otherwise, I might have missed it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Otherwise, all those in favour of the minutes. Thank you. I'll sign them off. Declaration of Interest.
Anthony. I'm chairman of Optus, and I have an important interest in item 8.
I've got an interest in the same item because my husband is chairman of the whole group.
Thank you. So we now move into public question time. The first one is from Indemn. Would you like to step up and ask a question?
Good evening, everybody. Okay. The Parkhead Meadow Road along the Embroid has recently had a cycle lane footpath built through the middle of it. What consultation was given to the public and the residents of the area before this cycle lane was built right through the area used by children and adults to play ball sports?
Thank you for the question, Indemn. And the improvements to the Embroid corridor were required to provide an attractive pedestrian link between Matthews Green Development and the new Sang or Country Park to the west of Old Forest Road. The area is owned and managed by Borough Council as informal open space, and whilst it's used for informal ball games, none of it is marked out as playing kitchens, but it is unlikely that the new footpath will significantly compromise...
You're in the wrong area. This is the Meadow Road area, where Meadow Road Shops is, up to the bridge.
Well, I don't think that was clear. This was the Embroid Corridor Works.
No, this says Meadow Road.
This is the Parkhead Meadow Road.
Meadow Road is an Embroid corridor.
So that's the Embroid?
No. The Embroid does run alongside it, yes. But it's not the same as the one by Old Forest Road.
It's the other, it's the other...
Okay. I will go round and round about and come back to you on that then. The footpath anyway was not designed as a cycleway, and the one that I'm talking about can only be accessed through the existing kissing gates at site end. But if it is a different site, I do apologise, and I will come back to you.
It is a different type of footpath. The one on Meadow Road one is very much quite a substantial path, whereas the one I know you're talking about is a footpath. Okay, so my question then would be, is what sort of consultation was done with the local people, and what feedback did you get from it?
Obviously, I don't have the reply to that. I won't attempt to answer that.
No, sorry, James.
So you'll get a written answer for both your main question and the supplementary?
It is.
It is, I think. Peter, would you like to come up and ask your question?
Evening, everyone. Given that Network Rail has confirmed to John Rowood MP that it and the Borough Council are planning a permanent footbridge at the townhouse crossing to span both the Waterloo and North Downs railway lines, could the executive member say what those plans are and when they are competitive, especially since the bridge over the Waterloo line is defined as temporary?
Mark? Yes, hello, Peter. Thank you for your question. Network Rail originally applied to Wokingham Borough Council to close the crossing permanently and install a stepped footbridge over the Reading to Waterloo line. However, it was both the council and Network Rail's aspiration to provide a fully accessible ramped footbridge over the railway, a step-free structure. As a result, Network Rail withdrew its application for permanent closure and funded the temporary football, uh, football, footbridge that you see. I've got it on the break. A memorandum of understanding between the council and Network Rail provides that the temporary structure will remain in place until such time as a permanent ramped footbridge, a step-free footbridge is delivered. The council's long-term plans for a permanent structure over the Waterloo to Reading line could also see the existing footbridge over the North Downs line replaced with a ramped footbridge. This would ensure the same level of accessibility across both lines. The design for the new Montessori car park at Carnival Paul allows for the end stair lift tower to tie in to a footbridge over the railway in the future, and it is anticipated that both the council and Network Rail would contribute towards the funding of a new bridge. The townhouse lane crossing is one of four potential footbridge improvements identified on the council's community infrastructure list, the 123 list, but it's not currently in the council's capital programme. Thank you.
Do you have supplementary?
My supplementary is, what do you mean by temporary? Must have a finite definition.
Temporary is the definition of Network Rail, and the memorandum of understanding asked us to use reasonable endeavours towards providing the permanent step-free structure. In short, it's a longer-term aspiration for both Network Rail and Wokingham Borough Council.
Thank you.
One of the penalties of dividing the Network Rail, I'm afraid.
Thank you, Peter.
So we now move on to member questions. Item 79. Ian 1 through to 3 will be answered by Mark Cannel. Thank you, Brew.
Good evening. Good evening, Mark, particularly. Who saw and was able to comment on the bid for the Graisley Garden settlement before it was submitted to the DCLG in July this year, within or outside the council?
Thank you for your question, Brew. It's a confidential expression of interest, and it was lodged to CLG on the 28th of July 2016 this year to establish dialogue with the government in the event that this approach is selected as part of the local plan update. The document is now publicly available at www.wokingham.gov.uk/Planning and Building Control/Planning Policy/Local Plan Update. The parties involved in submitting the document can be seen by reference to that document. As is normal practice with such matters, lead officers and members were party to the process of this submission.
Do you want to have a supplementary?
I do. It's not the one I expected to have. Which is, at the beginning of that statement, you said confidential expression of interest. Could you tell me where in the prospectus it says it has to be confidential? That's the government prospectus that was published in March.
Okay, I mean, we chose for it to be confidential. We didn't want to preempt anything in this process because we're obviously at the early stages of reviewing our local plan, so we didn't want to preempt anything else.
Thank you, Brew. Rochelle, would you like to step up and ask your question?
Good night, Brew. Who wants to answer this one?
Ask me.
Could you please explain how an inspector would not say you have prejudged the local plan submitting a bid for Graisley Garden Development using only two developers whilst not providing the same access to other developers?
Thank you for your question, Rochelle. Sort of leads on from a supplementary question. It's a confidential expression of interest to governments locally led at garden villages, towns and cities prospectus, and it was lodged with CLG on the 28th of July 2016. This is part of a discussion with government to establish whether there is any merit in this approach, should the public favour this approach as part of the local plan update process. As there is only one submission as part of the call for sites which proposes a garden settlement, and this is at Graisley, the local plan inspector would see this as a business as usual matter. Nothing has been decided, and therefore the council cannot be said to have prejudged the local plan. The local plan update is at an early stage of development. The council will be carrying out a further formal consultation with residents and stakeholders during June-July 2017 next year, subject to executive approval. This consultation will seek views on the council's preferred policy approach, as well as an assessment of those sites suggested to the council to consider allocating for different uses. The local plan examination conducted by a planning inspector is not anticipated to take place until December 2018. Therefore, there's ample opportunity through the process for the full range of views, whether from residents or developers, to be expressed. The council has already indicated as part of the call for sites process that we will contact developers where necessary to provide further additional information. The expressions of interest relating to the garden settlements refer to welcoming expresses of interest which included support from private sector developers and/or landowners. Therefore, the council chose to work with developers to maximise the opportunity for any potential expression of interest to be considered more favourably. Pre-application dialogue is confidential, and it is on this basis that the conversations were held. And as I said before, the submission is now public and is on our website. I won't read that again, but it's there. Thank you.
Did the two developers and the estate approach the council about the garden settlement in order to WBC approach them, have an exclusive deal about the settlement?
As I said before, it was part of a pre-application process that the developers paid for, and then we saw that opportunity with a two-week deadline.
So they approached you? They approached the council? That's what I just asked. You didn't answer that.
Well, I think I did, yeah. It was part of a pre-application process, so I suppose the answer is we came to the conclusion together.
And can I correct a statement? It is not an exclusive arrangement with anything. There is no exclusivity whatsoever. Moving on. Clive, would you like to step up and ask your question?
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mark.
Evening.
At least five local councils have applied to the DCLG for funding to create so-called garden villages. These five made their residents aware of their ideas and initial plans during July and August with press releases and statements. Why did you keep your plans to build 15,000 homes in Graisley secret from our residents?
Thank you for your question, Clive. The expression of interest submitted to the government by the council on the 28th of July is now on our website, and I described the address earlier. As you can see, the expression of interest is not a formal bid, and it was submitted confidentially. This was in order to establish a dialogue with government in the event that the local plan update process favoured this approach. This is a business as usual matter to establish the best possible position for our residents in the event that they favour a particular option as part of the plan-making process. As it is also in parallel part of a pre-application process, it was for the time being a confidential matter, as would be normal in these circumstances. The submission made by other authorities had more advanced on their individual processes and would have been considered suitable for wider publicity on their own merits, unlike the Graisley document. Thank you.
Are you sure you have a supplementary?
I do. Thank you very much. As confidentiality was not a requirement from the DCLG, would you apologise to the residents of Graisley, Spencer's Wood, Shinfield, and all other residents of the borough who consider that they are adversely affected by this proposal for keeping your proposal secret, even though you didn't need to?
Thank you for your supplementary. As I explained earlier, confidentiality was a business as normal matter in this case. We'll be resubmitting publicly at some point, so no apology needed.
No apology. Thank you. Nancy, would you like to ask your question, please?
I've got you tonight, Keith. Do you have the necessary authority, or sorry, did you have the necessary authority to submit the proposals for the Graisley Garden settlement when you went to the DCLG in July this year?
The confidential expression of interest to which you refer was submitted with the appropriate authority. Are you sure you have a supplementary?
I do. How come then, and why did you have to go back to your group to get retrospective agreement from them? As you say you had the necessary authority to submit the Graisley proposals, it would appear, well, someone overstepped your authority. This is an important point, and needs an answer.
As we've said before, we don't discuss internal workings of our group. They are confidential. Thank you.
It's in the public domain now.
So, Gary, would you like to come up and ask your question, please?
Thank you, Keith. I'd like to ask a question standing in my name, please. Thank you, Gary. It gives me an opportunity again to re-emphasise that no capital spend has yet been agreed for rebuilding or refurbishing Bournemouth Leisure Centre, and the recommendation later in the agenda is being agreed. The £20 million you refer to as the saving the council is faced with is revenue, whilst this project is eventually approved as part of the capital programme is capital. I would also like to point out our commitment to the health and wellbeing of our residents and the important part of our leisure centres' play in this. I would also add the financial revenue implications of a do-nothing approach. This includes the escalating repair works of a 70s building, which is most likely would become too great a burden to consider to be funded by a leisure provider and will fall to this council as revenue. We are not only providing leisure facilities here for residents, but the centre is an integral part of the provision of Bournemouth School and other local schools. Since the council took the facility back with a small investment by One Life and this council, we've added considerable income to successful gym and more welcoming environment and added facilities for GP referrals. As an example, recently, a middle-aged resident who had a severe stroke was told he needed round-the-clock care at home. He was determined he would remain independent and was referred to our long-term conditions gym at Bournemouth, and is now fully independent of care, which the authority would have had to provide for life. Another example is a number of older people who swim regularly at the pool. They said when they did the public consultation that if it wasn't for the swimming, they were convinced they wouldn't be here anymore. Now, I remind you that our leisure centres already return £660,000 per annum to the council funds. There is no subsidy. The new contract from May 2018 and with a new facility at Bournemouth, this income should increase significantly if we do go ahead, of course.
I'm sure you've got a supplementary.
Yes, I have. As part of administration that kept Graisley a secret for 18 months, and more or less only came clean when the report was leaked, also as part of the administration that chose to hire a housing number without any consultation, and you personally voted for the leaders' recommendation to override the independent remuneration panel recommendations, resulting in all of them resigning and saying in the letter, "The decision made by council will set a just dangerous precedent that is not in the interest of Wokingham's taxpayers". How can you convince the public that your planned consultation of leisure strategy will have any meaning when secrecy seems with the genetic makeup of this administration? I think that's up for the public to decide. Thank you.
So Beth, would you like to ask your question, please?
Thank you, Keith. And it's very appropriate to think after Angus's remarks to Gary. My question is, as Wokingham now has some responsibility for the health of its residents, how far would an eight-lane pool in Woodley help towards meeting those responsibilities?
Thank you, Beth. It gives me an opportunity to set out the health benefits of the council's aspiration for leisure services, which is set out in the draft leisure strategy, which is currently out for open public consultation until the 23rd of December. The aims of the strategy are to be an authority which promotes opportunities for all residents to be active and to participate in sporting and leisure activities to improve health and wellbeing in high-quality facilities or environments, enable an increase in proportion of the adult population achieving chief medical officer's physical activity guide levels, support the aims of childhood obesity plan, maintain leisure centre provision through a model of community facilities for the majority in each of the borough's main localities, the three towns of Woking, Woodley and Hurley, with Arborfield and Rush Green facilities being added to the borough's leisure assets in the near future, enable the provision of other facilities across the borough which offer multiple use and not exclusivity for one group or activity which makes use of the borough's open spaces, support the contribution made by voluntary organisations, and deliver services and facilities which cover their delivery and maintenance costs, providing a significant maximised income for the council, value for the council taxpayer, and maximum return on investment with fair levels of charging for the population. As can be seen, many aims have promoting and improving the health of our residents at their heart. In essence, maintaining a leisure centre at Bournemouth, which contains swimming pools, a sports hall, gym and fitness studios, will maintain, and with the new or better facility expand opportunities for our residents to participate in types of physical activity to benefit both mental and physical health. In addition, the specialist equipment and services provided to people with long-term health conditions can be shown to directly impact positively on the likelihood of some of these people requiring council-funded social care. As a facility which is shared use with Bournemouth School, the centre and its swimming pool contribute to the health of children and young people, and through swimming lessons on their safety also. The use of the pool and other facilities by the community groups and sports clubs provides further opportunity for members to maintain and improve their levels of fitness and health. On the issue of the pool having eight lanes, this is one of the options put before us. We have an option for a six-lane pool, and the refurbish option would include a pool of the current size which has five lanes. The number of lanes in the new build options is subject to executive consideration of the cost-benefits of these different options, which include the build costs and running costs set against the estimated revenue earnings and the management fee provided by the operator. Also separately, subject to the planning process and the design of an acceptable scheme, what is in reality a small site for such an operation as a leisure centre. May I stress that no capital spend has yet been agreed for rebuilding or refurbishing Bournemouth Leisure Centre.
Are you sure you've got a supplementary?
Sure, I have. Thank you, Angus, for that was a very comprehensive reply, and one I was pleased to hear from you. As you know, if it hadn't been for Woodley Town Council, then the pool wouldn't be there now for you to develop, and we'd be starting from scratch if you were to put a pool in Woodley, which means that Woodley residents were double-rated for many years as they paid their leisure bill to Wokingham and to Woodley Town Council. When the leisure contract was put in place several years ago, or many years ago now, Woodley Town Council also asked that the pool be included in it, and Wokingham turned it down. Probably because of that, Woodley now deserves the best, and I think an eight-lane pool will provide the best return for money and the best return for the residents of the borough, and I'd urge you all to look at that carefully tonight and hopefully choose it.
I don't think there's a question, though.
Oh. Will you choose it?
That's up to my colleagues a bit later.
Which one will be the answer?
And of course, I can make a comment. Right, thank you. That's the end of the member question time. So we now move into the formal executive papers. We start off with the council and company business, pages 19 to 26. I'm not going to say too much on here. Optus is gradually going through some major work with the merger with the Royal Borough, and that's well on track. The housing company, Phoenix Avenue, is well underway, and so Foster's care home has started, so there are two very big projects. So if there's any questions, we've got at least the chairman of Optus here. If there is any, we'll move straight to the recommendations on page 19. All those in favour, please show. That's unanimous. So we now move on to the Bournemouth Leisure Centre, pages 27 to 40.
Thank you. Some of the background to this was told to us just a few minutes ago by Beth Rowan, but more recently, this facility came back into Borough Council's hands from December 2014, and some further investment to improve the offering there was made. This small investment already has had a big payback, but still we're left with an old 1970s building. We've carried out extensive consultation on options, ideas, and a number of events were held, the school interviews evolved, and we've now got the results of a full condition survey. The options for refurbishment and different options of what we might rebuild with on this site, which, as I said earlier, is a tight and constrained site, really leads to the recommendation, which is to rebuild. And we've left the decision at this point on six or eight lanes. We're recommending a six-lane facility at this point because the difference in capital costs and the constraints of size of the site for an eight-lane pool don't stack up. But it will be progress to have a new facility with six lanes. So the recommendation we're asked to look at, chairman, is to approve, subject to confirming of the capital spend, the centre is demolished and replaced with a new build facility, as described here, with six lanes, and approving the release of some Section 106 developer contributions towards the cost of the scheme up to the value of the project budget, with some already substantial developer contributions being identified.
Okay. Any questions? Anthony?
One comment, to be honest. Beth reminded me that I was responsible for letting the leisure contract back in the 1998. It was very innovative at the time, and we turned a facility that cost us money where hard things weren't what they should be, and fruit machines didn't seem to make any money either. Sorry. We had a situation where the income from the facilities weren't quite what they should have been, and I am extremely pleased to see that over the last 20-odd years, we've now turned this from a cost to a contributor. And I think that is the key message for this contract, is this work, is that it needs to be something that makes money for us, and I think that's the most important piece. Whether it's six lanes, eight lanes, or what, I don't mind, as long as it makes money.
I think what I can take out of that comment is the fact that if a commitment and funding comes that we can rebuild it, it makes the whole contract for a new operator or continuing with a current operator a much more attractive proposition.
If I could also just add on that point, the important, that is the really important piece, is that the management is done by people who are professionals in this particular industry, and they make hard decisions on price and what they put on, and they then put on what the public actually wants and the price the public is going to pay. That seems to me to work very well.
And that in principle was agreed at our previous meeting.
Pauline?
I've just read this paper. I was a bit curious about, on page 35, you've got a graph estimating annual net income for each option, but then it says underneath that we receive management fees by the loan contract, so I wasn't quite sure why that graph was in here, which made me wonder about what happens if the income for the operator is not at the level expected and they end up making a loss. What's the cover for the council in that case?
The contribution from the whole contract... The contribution from the whole contract will be part of the contract negotiation.
Sorry, that wasn't the question, the question was, is there, will there be something in the contract to mean that the risk is with the people who lease the pool off us and pay us, rather than the council essentially back-supporting the agreement?
I think I did answer it. The whole way of running each of these leisure centres together will form the bid that the potential contractors will make.
I think the answer is that if the leisure provider makes a loss, that's their loss.
That's the question. That was the answer, sorry.
Julian?
Thank you. I mean, I fully support this proposal, Angus. My comment was, based on page 29, what sort of communication have we had with Reading with regard to their proposals, just a kind of mile or so down the road?
There is a number of things happening with swimming pools in Reading, including the imminent closure of Arthur Hill this December, and the central pool years further on, and a proposal unfunded at the moment, I believe, for a new facility at Palmer Park. Our figures are worked on the basis of the income that would come from working on the borough residents, but we obviously will be watching very closely what happens across the greater line.
Who's next? John?
Thank you, Che. Just going to the recommendation two, we talked about six or eight lanes, just wanted confirmation from one from Anthony, that further discussions will go on, particularly around the contract in future, and also the school use and their requirements to make it work to its best ability, and bringing the most income in to make it work. Because at the moment, it's obviously got five lanes, six lanes is an additional lane, and I don't know how much capacity is already used through the day, through the schools, etc., and what else could be brought in to be used there, so I just wanted confirmation that that conversation will continue if that hasn't already happened. And then in the first of the recommendations, where it's subject to agreement and confirmation of the capital spent for Joe or Joanna Bloggs' industry, I was just wondering whether you could perhaps explain that process, so that people can understand how that progresses from here.
Firstly, on the school, yes, we have been, are and will be working very closely with them, because obviously it is a major part of their provision, and something that needs to be fitted in, the same with Sir Crispins and will be at Arborfield, that the requirements of the operator and the school and the local residents needs are all matched. On the capital spend, the council is faced with a number of projects that needs to be moved forward, and the leisure centre here, and at Rush Green, and anything we might do in future in other centres, obviously it's got to be set against the other requirements, and we will be making a recommendation to council next year.
Is there any other questions? Otherwise, I'll go straight to the vote. The recommendations on page 27, there's three of them, all those in favour, please share. And I'm abstaining, that can be recorded as well. So we move on to the next item. This is the most exciting thing in the world. Gary, aren't you going to stay for the highway asset management programme? Item 82, pages 41 to 58, highway asset management policy and strategy. Your task, if you choose to accept it, is to try and make this exciting.
WBC has a large inventory of highways-related assets. These comprise roads, pavements, footbaths, car parks, streetlights, street venture, and many other categories. All of these assets need to be identified and have an assigned value, and they also have a need to be serviced or repaired or modified. In order to know what we own and what it is costing, and what the plans are for longer-term development and future usage, one would need a properly organised literal database of it all, and a set of procedures and standards to manage it. That is what this recommendation is all about, but in very much more detail than my introduction describes. WBC started this assets process several years ago, and it has continued to be developed ever since, but what is happening now is that the government has specified that every authority should be doing this, and that if one didn't do it, that it might affect any grants and financial sport schemes related to highways, or any other aspects the government might produce in the future. So it would affect the income level related to it. So I'm asking of the executive support, the recommendation, to continue developing and enhancing our highways asset programme, as identified in this report, and the wording is that the executive improve the highways asset management policy and strategy implemented within existing service budgets. That's what I'm asking for tonight. Thank you.
I can see you all chomping at the bit, ask a question. Anthony?
Yeah.
Whether you attended to or not, I don't know, but you made a comment about income.
No.
Did you mean income, or is there more money from government by doing this? And if so, I'm interested to know where it's coming from, and how we might get more of it.
If we don't do it, it might, if we don't do it, it could affect some income, because the government wants us to have a scheme which it can readily identify and know that we know what we're doing, what we own, what we're doing with it, what it costs, what would be the cost of any future modifications and maintenance, and if we could prove that we know what we're doing with that, basically suggests that the government funding would be more, I suppose, supportive, but if we didn't know what we were doing, it's unlikely to be as generous, I guess. But that's not income in the way of selling tickets anywhere, but it's, it influences it.
So the answer is that I can expect you to generate some more income by passing this?
Well, if you vote for it, we could potentially generate some, yes.
Yes, well, the side thing on income, there seems to be increasing interest in allocating funds to recognise the effect of flooding of roads when we have major events, and we're hoping that we will really make contact after the last event to point that out, in effect we cut the borough in two for a while. The point I'm going to make was, I know you only did it by accident, an outcome that you didn't mention about the road drains and gullies, the sustainable drainage, the critical drainage assets, ditches and structures, which are part of this programme.
Then this would have been even longer. And I was trying to maintain the most exciting presentation I've requested.
And I guess I ought to point out that a storm, Angus, had nothing to do with Angus at all, even though he's responsible for flooding.
It was a whimper. Oh, chairman, it did, it was such a whimper, I can tell.
So, we've got the recommendations there on page 41, all those in favour, please share.
It was a comment that was, I just find it interesting that highways are viewed as assets rather than liabilities.
So unplayable.
It could be an underhanded method of government saying, "We've got more capital money than we think", but anyway, moving to the vote, all those in favour, please share. That's unanimous. So we now move on to fees and charges, 59 to 890, Angus?
That's me.
Oh, is it? Sorry, Anthony?
That's not me. Yes, this is even more riveted, even more exciting than highways. We took on our decision last year to bring the uprating of fees and charges to the November meeting so that they could be implemented as early as possible, thereby ensuring that we get as much income next commercially as we can. These have been through the relevant executive members, and therefore I would like to take questions or comment, and comment it to everyone.
Angus?
Just to comment on that, as with last year, we didn't just put a blanket 1.9% increase on everything, everything was looked at, benchmarked, and to see whether we can make use of it. And part of the timing benefit is there are certain things which, if I could use one of the examples, fishing licence, you don't want to change fishing licence costs in the middle of the fishing season, so we'd be able to do that from the first of January. I use that just as an example, but they have been very carefully looked at.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I'll go straight to the vote. All those in favour on the recommendation on page 59, please share. That's unanimous. And then the final report to review and vote is the Public Protection Shared Service Page 91, 112, and that's for you.
Thank you. This paper is to create a shared service arrangement for public protection with Bracken Forest Council and West Berkshire, we currently have one place in West Berkshire. We're also taking this opportunity to change the way it's managed, so that we actually have more control over the service. We have in the past had comments about the service provided by West Berkshire, and part of this is to actually get more direct control of the three-way service than we currently have, where it's sort of almost outsourced. I'd be interested in any comments going forward on the shared service, we'll keep a very close eye on how it operates, and will investigate and bring back any issues. So I'd like to agree the creation of this service, it will save us some more money. Anthony? To delegate the authority, the borough solicitor, the director of resources, and me, to finalise the agreement between the three councils, and to delegate our executive functions in respect of public protection to the new joint committee with West Berkshire and Bracken Forest, through the Public Protection Partnership, to enable the joint committee to further delegate the operational functions to managers of the shared service, and to agree the fees and charges and the appendix.
Any questions? John?
Just a comment, Che, thank you. Just on page 92, I just found a comment that I welcome back, that now we've had an executive member sat on a board on the joint committee. It should give more oversight of the functions than in the contract, and I think that would be very much welcome.
Thank you, we have a sort of unofficial shared service board at the moment, we should discuss the performance of the service, this will give that oversight a lot more too.
Thank you.
Arthur, so, I know we've had some issues in Shinfield, and I do welcome the expertise.
Okay, if there's no other questions, I'll go straight to the vote on page 91, there's four recommendations, all those in favour, please share. That's unanimous, and that is the last item on the agenda. So thank you all for coming and listening, see you next time.